And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Here.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
I am here.
And councilmember Wyatt.
His audio is connecting, but he is present and will be on. All right, to stand for the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the Americans, which is a nation in the business of justice for all.
Thank you, our chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Thank you. I, intriguing that today is Groundhog Day, and for some of us, it feels in leadership like the movie Groundhog Day in terms of every day we wake up, things being a bit disorienting. This morning, I was fortunate, a friend called and gave me a scripture that was helpful for me. I hope it will be for you all as well. Psalm, chapter forty-six. "God is our refuge and strength, always ready to help in times of trouble. So we will not fear when earthquakes come, mountains crumble into the sea. Let the oceans roar and foam, the mountains tremble as the waters surge. A river brings joy to the city of our God, the sacred home of the Most High. God dwells in that city; it cannot be destroyed. From the very break of day, God will protect it." Let's pray together. Father, I thank you for the power of this song. Thank you, Lord, that it declares that you are our refuge and strength with all that are coming against us in this time of extended trouble and all the pressure that it puts on leadership at every level in our city and county and state and nation and around the world. Father, the, the weight is heavy on the shoulders of those who lead. Today, I pray that you would show yourself strong to all of us, all that are hurting, all that are grieving, all that are feeling lost, all that wonder what's coming next. I pray thanking you that there's joy that is going to come again to our city and that you are the one that is protecting us. I pray, Father, even now, looking to you, oh wise God, for wisdom and direction for the council today. Help them to hear clearly your voice. And Lord, thank you that you have good intentions for the city of Buffalo and our future. We submit it once again to you and your faithfulness, and we thank you in your precious Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Warner, and thank you for that scripture and prayer. Councilmembers, memorials? Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think many of you knew that my mom had been somewhat sick the past few months. On last Tuesday, she started her immunotherapy at Roswell Park. And on Thursday morning, we rushed her to the hospital, and she died on Thursday evening at about nine thirty PM. It was sort of a shock for us. We were told that she had, you know, three to six months, depending on how the immunotherapy was gonna work. And, you know, it's, I'm still in a little bit of shock right now over it. But she was, mom and dad were both active in the community. I got my, I think, my love of the neighborhood through both of them. My mom was more active than my dad. I remember as a kid, she was a volunteer Cub Scout mother and home, you know, the homeschool or whatever they were called at that time. She volunteered at Little League Baseball. I remember she was the Catholic Youth Organization Coordinator when I was in high school. I remember she would do things for the kids in the neighborhood. When I was growing up, we would have movie night, and she would buy ice cream and stuff for the kids. And I remember her and my dad both had said that, you know, they were fortunate because in the nineteen seventies, some of us remember this only too well, Bethlehem Steel and a lot of the other companies were closing. And, you know, people were losing their jobs, and I had friends whose fathers were making thirty, forty thousand dollars a year, which at that time was considered very good money, that suddenly became house painters and were making maybe a third of what they had been making. And I didn't realize it at the time, but mom and dad were inviting friends over. We'd have a little bit more, you know, hot dog outings in the backyard, hamburgers, and, you know, the kids were invited over. And so, you know, that's, you know, I have nothing but respect for my mom and my dad, and I was very fortunate. Maybe I'm the only person in the world who can say that COVID was a blessing in a strange sort of a way because I lived upstairs, I live upstairs with my mom in a double in Riverside. And since March of last year, I was her primary caregiver, and I got to spend an awful lot of time with her, taking her to doctor's appointments, shopping, whenever we could get out, we would, but just sitting downstairs. She loved Steve Harvey. She wanted me to sit there and watch Steve Harvey on Family Feud with her on a regular basis. But I got to spend a lot of time with her, and she's gonna be very, very sorely missed by me, the family, and by many, many people in the Black Rock and Riverside neighborhood. She was also a longtime Democratic Committee member. I think she was first elected in nineteen eighty-four or something like that. So very active in the neighborhood. So, and thank you for those people that sent condolences. I appreciated it very much, and I'm sure that she does as well.
Councilmember Gullumbeck, this is the first that I'm hearing about it. For you to be in this meeting today with such news and still to be serving this community, serving this city is a, really a testimony about your mom. We've had this discussion about your mom over the year, and for her to pass and you to continue going through the work is just commendable. Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. You, you just took the words right out of my mouth. You know, I had the privilege of meeting Mrs. Gullumbeck once or twice, and what an incredibly sweet woman. And I've had the privilege of serving with Joe now for eight and a half years, and he's an incredibly, he's a great guy and a great council member, and that is no doubt, as you said, a testament to the values of his mother and his father. But as we remember his mother today, I just wanna send all my well wishes to him and his sisters and their extended family. And I know that they are gonna be sorely missed by their family and the surrounding community.
Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. And again, I have to echo the sentiments of both you and Councilmembers Scanlon because I, I, I know how much, you know, Joe loved his mother. We talked about it. We even traded Baptist and Catholic prayers with each other over the last several weeks. And I really appreciate how he's come back and showing us his strength and the work ethic that he has. Joe, man, listen, we love you, and I am so, so grateful to God that we've been able to, to, to cultivate a great working relationship, but above that, a respected friendship, and we're here for you, we're praying for you. And I think, I think that, I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, I'm actually shocked that we've come so close. But I'm grateful to God that we have become as close as we have as far as how we are able to, to go back and forth with our conversations. But with that said, Mr. Chair, Council President Pridgen, I really appreciate all of our council members. But this right here just goes to show the character of Joe, what his mother and his father have taught him through all these years on how to be dedicated and committed to your community. And with that said, Joe, our hats off to you. You have my condolences. We love you, man, and if there's anything you need, let us know. All right, appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Warner.
As you said, Council President, this was the first I'd heard also from Mr. Gullumbeck. And so I just wanted to let you know, you've been praying for mom and the extended issues that she's had. But your prayer, our prayers are with you, and the whole council resonates with that as well. And as was well said, anything that we can do to help or any service that's gonna happen, please let us know.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Council President. My condolences to you, Councilmember Gullumbeck, and I might be out of order, Council President, but I will hope that we could dedicate these proceedings, I'm on behalf of Mrs. Gullumbeck. Joe has been in service, I mean, I don't know how many years, but it does speak volumes of his family values. And, you know, I just honor and have much respect that he's here to on this day with the loss of his mom. So my prayers are with you, Councilmember Gullumbeck.
I will second that motion.
Councilmember Freelittle.
Thank you very much. Just wanna echo the sentiments that all of my colleagues have already said. And I had the pleasure of meeting Mrs. Gullumbeck once at a pierogi fundraiser about ten years ago, and she was just wonderful. I was, I had the opportunity to talk to her for a few minutes, and she was just an absolute wonderful woman. And I'm sure that she will be missed, and she's in our prayers.
Councilmember Noah Kous.
And just to join with my colleagues, my condolences to the North District Councilmember. It truly is a testament that he is here, but I know the good Polish stock he comes from. So I know that he has to report to work no matter what, and it's also his birthday today, so good Polish fashion, Stolat, Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Wow, you added on the birthday, too. Unbelievable. Councilmember Rivera, then Councilmember Bowman, I believe. Councilmember Rivera, you're muted.
I would like to express my deepest condolences to Councilmember Gullumbeck. As I listen to him speak, all I can think about is him honoring his mother from the very beginning to her last days, and I think that's very important. We all honor our mothers and fathers, and for that, I, I thank Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Gullumbeck, I just wanna offer my condolences and much respect for you being here on this meeting, and we all appreciate the services you bring to your district in the city of Buffalo. Thank you.
Thank you. Have I recognized anyone? Any other memorials? All right, one to remember Beatrice Williams, who actually is a, was a Mastin District resident. She has had the store and apartments on Ferry. And I remember as a little boy being so amazed. It was a time when many people from the neighborhood owned their own stores and lived in the neighborhoods, especially African Americans. And she has gone on, she is the aunt of one of our workers in the Eloquent office. Also Anthony Hunter, also known as Ronnie, house where I was babysat most of my childhood on Winslow Avenue. His mother used to babysit me, and they took me, and I would actually be in their family photos. And he has passed on, and then a member of the Saint Luke Church, Viola Lewis, who was contributor to many in our community, a very active mother, but very active in her community and in her church. And she, in the words of Joe Gullumbeck, will be sorely missed. And as always, anyone, men, women, who have given their life for the freedom of our country or others, we remember. And with the suggestion of our colleagues, we dedicate this meeting to the memory of Mrs. Gullumbeck. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you all. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files in front of you. Are there any objections to any of the late files? Taking away your right to pause the meeting for you to review them if you have not had the opportunity. Are we going from the top of the order, Lee?
Yes, we are.
Item number one. Item number one, Historic District Application, eighty-four, eighty-eight, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-six, one hundred, one oh two, Florida Streets.
Motion to send to legislation, that CD.
Motion to send to legislation, sir?
Yes.
All right. Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number two, Local Landmark, seventeen sixty-two and seventeen sixty-six, Main Street.
Motion to send the legislation, item two and three.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number four, DDA fifty-one, fifty-seven, sixty-one, sixty-five, sixty-nine, seventy-one, seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy-nine, and eighty-one, Swinburne Street.
Motion to approve items four and five.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number six, Report of Sale, Eight Norway Park.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Noah Kous.
Item number seven, Report of Sale, Two Seventy-three and Two Seventy-five, Petruski.
Motion to approve items seven and eight.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number nine, Cash Flow Report, December twenty twenty.
Motion to send to Finance.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number ten, Interfund Loan, Abbott Road Streetscape.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanna thank everyone who's been involved with this issue. This item is an interfund loan, which will close the gap while we wait for money to come through the, the pipeline to get Phase One of the Abbott Road reconstruction project underway this year. This has been a project that has been many years in the making, and again, I can't thank everyone enough that's been involved, whether it's the, the number of residents who've attended public meetings, taken part in surveys, things of that nature, or the Department of Public Works, who's been incredible working with us, the engineering teams have been hired and taking part in it. It's all been an incredible process, and it's gonna lead to an outstanding project on Abbott Road where we are gonna completely reconstruct the street in three, in several phases. But this is for Phase One, which will get underway this summer. And again, to the residents of South Buffalo who've been waiting for this project for a few years now, we're finally here. We've had some delays. COVID obviously caused, created some delays, but we're here. We'll have shovels in the ground soon enough. And I can't look, I can't tell you how much I'm looking forward to seeing this project completed.
Excellent.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Go on, sir.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski? Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number eleven, Certificate of Appointment, Systems Analyst.
Motion to send to Civil Service, items eleven and twelve.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirteen, Notification Cereals.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number fourteen, Change Order, East Eleven ADA.
Motion to approve items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, Appoint Superintendent of Communications Operations.
Motion to send to Civil Service, items twenty-four and twenty-five.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number twenty-six, Contract Extension, City of Buffalo and MS Analytical.
Motion to approve items twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, Liquor License Notice.
Motion to receive and file, items twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirty, Bickford, Concerns Property Deterioration at One Eighty-two Bigford Avenue.
Motion to send to CD, items thirty and thirty-one.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirty-two, National Flood Insurance Program Flood Insurance Rate Maps for County.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirty-three, Senator Kennedy Common Council Vaccine Equity Response.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirty-four, School Speed Zone Camera Pause Editorial.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck, on this item, I did talk to Council, to Kevin Helfer to make sure so that the public would understand that the, all of the cameras, although they will be operating, although they built the school speed zones are still in effect, which this council has supported the zones. But there will be, whether it's called a grace period, we call it, some people call it a pause. This council did ask for there to be a pause. There will be a pause for the entire month of February. I wanna thank the administration for doing this. I think it is so important to get this right. And they will be able then to see, I believe people still, there's a grace period. I'm not sure if they'll get a warning ticket. I, I, I think that it's good that the administration is looking at this, is also trying to make sure that when people are being ticketed in March, that all of the, you know, bumps in the roads have been smoothed out. This council has been a supporter of school safety zones. I'm still a supporter of school safety zones. Just wanted to see the program roll out right. So I wanna thank the administration for the month of the pause. But I want the public to know that there are, is still, is still a speed zone, and people shouldn't be flying through those areas. They shouldn't be doing sixty miles an hour anywhere in the city of Buffalo, but especially around those schools. The schools are open. I was able to, I was asked to join Dr. Cash yesterday in welcoming back those children whose parents have elected to send their, their children back, so we just wanna make sure our children are safe. So again, thank you for that pause. Councilmember Scan.
Yeah, thank you. Just to, just to follow up on one point you did make, I just want everyone to be aware that, you know, you made it, you made it very clear. People, please just don't be speeding through these zones just because the cameras are on. But also in addition to that, these schools are operating, and an officer can get you. So please make sure you're abiding by the school speed limits despite the fact that there are no operational cameras.
Absolutely. It's not, it's not a free fall right now. Our children are there, and many of them for the first time. So, you know, kindergarten is in, it's our youngest, and then our seniors. Thank you. Next item.
Council President, the Councilmember Rashid Wyatt.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Beare? Council. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't.
No, no problem. No, no problem, Mr. Chair. I hope that this time is used to strengthen this program as well. You know, we can talk about the residents and ask them about the speed and all that good stuff, but we still are waiting for the proper signage. People are still driving through on Bailey Avenue thinking that it's being enforced from seven to six, which is not true. It's misleading, but hopefully they'll use this time, this break time, as they could have done the other times as well, to improve the program, to make it transparent where residents know exactly what they're dealing with and not surprised. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next item.
Item number thirty-five, P. Rizzo Request to Speak at Legislation Committee.
Motion is going to legislation, items thirty-five and thirty-six.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirty-seven, UHC Letter to Planning Board Regarding Four Hundred Camera.
Motion to send to CD. CD. And DPW.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number thirty-eight, Special Use Permit, Five Seventy-two South Division for Tobacco Sales.
Motion to send the legislation to City Planning Board, items thirty-eight through forty.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Submissions List, Civil Service, item number one, Appoint Cell Block Attendant.
Motion is to receive and file items one, two, and including three.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Council President?
Council, yes, sir. Councilmember Scan.
I had a question, and maybe it's for Corporation Council. If these are just to receive and file, there's nothing time sensitive about them, are there?
Assistant Corporation Council Karen Gordon, usually when we do receive and file, is, if the, if the document is really informational, and so there's no action approval or so that city needs to take on it in order to get something done.
Okay, just wanted to prove that, just that point to be clear, because if we could, could we have one of those three sent to police oversight? Just so we have that issue with police oversight, so I can raise some questions I have with administration of the police department.
Sure, which one?
Any one of the three is fine with me.
This is informational. Okay. You wanna send item one?
Sure.
Okay. So we had to revisit item number one. If that's all right with the chair? Civil Service?
That's fine.
All right, let's revisit item number one and rescind the motion. It's moved by the chair to rescind the motion to receive and file. It is now being moved by council, by the present protup, to send to police oversight, second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Thank, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chairman Wingo.
No problem.
Next item.
Finance, CD, PB, Funding Agreement, Third Continuation.
Mr. President, I don't quite agree with this one. So I just wanna know the point of order. Do I still approve even though I'm in a way for the vote? Is that what I should do for this item?
Yes, the committee has sent it out, the committee sent it out for approval, and then you can vote in the negative on that item.
I'm not comfortable with the operation from the Beverly Gray Center. It's just, to me, similar to the schools on cameras, it's really a mess. They haven't had an executive director since last year. There's a lot of issues here, and the fact that we have the mayor and one of his employees involved in this is really disconcerting. I'm not saying anything illegal is being done. I've been told that this is all legal. If it is, then fine. But I'm not comfortable with it, so I will motion to approve with reservations, and we can go for the roll. Thank you.
Council President, you're on mute right now.
But thank you. The motion is to approve, second by Councilmember Gullumbeck, and I'm recording Councilmember Wyatt in the negative. Is that correct, Councilmember?
Yes, sir.
Recording Councilmember Wyatt with the negative.
All right, Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
We didn't, did you get a Councilmember Farrelletto? He says yes.
Okay, Councilmember Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski? Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Wyatt?
No.
No.
Item number five, in community development, report of sale fourteen seventy-five Amherst.
Uh, at the request of the district council member, the motion is going to be to deny.
Second by councilmember Farrelittle, uh, councilmember, did you have any comment on the denial?
Yes, um, this item was brought in front of us because the house was listed at the foreclosure, I believe it was last foreclosure auction. It sold for a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars and the purchaser, it's my understanding, the purchaser was not able to come up with the funds. So it reverted back to the city of Buffalo and at some point, the city of Buffalo listed it on the real estate website and someone expressed an interest in purchasing it for eighty-seven thousand dollars from the city. Um, upon further investigation, um, the house was owned by a woman named Mabel Tips, who purchased the house in nineteen seventy-five. She passed away in two thousand and eleven and it appears someone was paying the taxes on the property for several years until it went into foreclosure for not paying, uh, six, I think it was six or seven hundred dollars in user fee. Um, so it, it went to auction. I, I researched the family of Ms. Tips. Um, I was going all over through different obituaries. I even contacted Council President Pridgen because I saw there was a funeral at one of his churches. We were able to get ahold of one of the daughters, um, who was unaware that the house was sold, um, or even foreclosed on ever. And I think it's important because the family, it, the estate is entitled to the surplus of the foreclosure funds. So I think it's very important that this specific house gets listed, um, by the city, probably on the MLS or in a different way. And I talked to the real estate department, they're good with it. I think this property can sell for significantly more money than the eighty-seven thousand dollars that was agreed on. This is a very hot neighborhood. It's three or four doors down from the zoo in the park side neighborhood, uh, a block away from Delaware Park. And I think we, we certainly owe it to the estate of Ms. Tips that her, um, that her kids, grandkids, however her estate is set up, gets absolutely as much money as possible. And that's why we're denying this sale and real estate is going to list it on the MLS. Thank you.
Um, thank you, councilmember, and thank you for, uh, the work that you did on behalf of this family. It was tremendous. Um, I did bury, I believe, her granddaughter, um, from the horrible homicide. And, uh, when you called and, and did all of that digging, uh, and I contacted that family, they were blown away uh, that a council member would try to track them down. It's a shame that the house was lost for, I think you say, user fee or something or some, some very small amount. Um, and we see this over and over. There's a house next door to me that is owned by, and he can sue if he wants, slumlord, and I just made Karen's hair stand on end. Um, but it is owned by a slumlord who got it from auction, who there was an elderly lady in the, uh, residence who, she was sick for years and didn't pay the taxes and lost that house. And somebody in New York bought it who hasn't done a thing with it. Um, so you doing that work, that family was very thankful. So thank you. I think we have to look into this process, especially when we're talking about, and I think it was, um, President Pro Temp in the past that sponsored legislation, was that you, that, that kind of protected some of these situations. It was even worse, uh, than what it is now, but I think we have to look at that. Uh, someone losing, um, what, what can be, you know, legacy building, um, for a very small amount. So thank you for that. Someone else had to handle it? Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend my colleague for his efforts on that. I think when this legislation came up to us to talk about this whole process, we had a lot of concerns. And, um, this is a point well taken that, you know, someone can lose out, um, for a small amount, um, for their legacy. And I know that is probably a little bit more prevalent in the black community because we don't have a lot of assets like this, so it's very important. And it just seems as though we have taken a lazy, um, lazy frere effort to assist people in these situations and not really put our due diligence in to see what we can do to find these families if we can. Um, it seems as though because we're hurting for money, we'll just go through the process. Um, but I thank you for what you've done. Matter of fact, I'm on an appraisal review board for this particular house. And there was a lot of debate with the individual who was purchasing it, um, and the appraisers were saying it was one in matter and that. So I know it's a very, very hot neighborhood and hopefully this family will be able to sell it and, um, get something to, um, leave a legacy for their family. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next.
Item number six, report of sale one oh two and one oh four Dodge.
Uh, this is without recommendation, Council President. Uh, did you have a recommendation at this point?
Yes, sir. Um, I've talked to, uh, real estate and my concern was, um, especially the fact that we don't really sell in elicit double lots, especially in an area that is experiencing gentrification, uh, without there being a project. Um, there is, uh, this, uh, so I am okay with approving this with the conditions, um, that, um, are in the contract that I want to read, uh, two of them into the record, uh, eleven C of the D to provision under which purchaser agrees to complete the repair and rehabilitation of the property. Um, and in this instance, it would be, um, completing the building of the house within twelve months from the date of closing. Um, section D, eleven D, a provision stating that in the event the purchaser does not satisfy all post-closing obligations within twelve months of closing, then all rights, title, claim and interest in and to the property of such or such improvements shall automatically revert to the seller, which is the city of Buffalo. And again, this is because we don't want, I don't want to start seeing, uh, prospect buying in these areas where people are simply buying up the land and then not doing anything with it, um, if they purchase it from the city of Buffalo. So I want to thank, uh, Real Estate, um, Hope, uh, Young Watkins, um, and, uh, Brendan Mahaffey for making sure uh, that these properties are either being moved and something happening, or it comes back to the city. Read that into the record. So that's for proof.
Motion is to approve, uh, with those conditions.
Second by councilmember Noakowski.
Item number seven, cracket, uh, BOPC golf fees twenty twenty-one.
Uh, we, we're gonna have to have a roll call. Do we have other approvers behind that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's my.
I'll make the motion that we approve six with your conditions and then I believe it was seven and eight, uh, yeah, within the mandate.
That's correct. All right. Second remains.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski. Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number nine, University District Main Street.
Motion is to receive and file items nine through and including sixteen.
Second by Majority Leader Rivera.
Legislation, item number seventeen, food store license nine oh four Broadway.
Legislation Chair, with us. If you are, you are on mute.
I was on mute. The motion is to approve seventeen with conditions and approve eighteen.
Second by councilmember Gollambeck.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski. Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, zoning map amendment nine and eleven city ship canal.
Motion is to recommit.
Second my councilmember Gollambeck.
Item number twenty, ATV and unregistered recreational use vehicles.
Motion is to receive and file.
Second my councilmember Gollambeck.
Item number twenty-one, special use permit nine seventy-six Kensington.
Motion is to approve with conditions.
Second by councilmember Gollambeck, councilmember Wingo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item, we are going to approve it with conditions of which, of course, we will submit to the council as well as, um, just put on the public record that there will be no, um, uh, wooden signs and they cannot sell shirts outside either.
Ready? With those conditions.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski. Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Police Oversight, item number twenty-two, Dominique Calhoun, questions for common counsel.
Motion to receive and file items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Second my councilmember Gollambeck.
Resolutions. Item number forty-one, Noakowski repeal section two four zero dot three seven of New York State penal law.
Motion towards items forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three.
Second my councilmember Gollambeck, councilmember Noakowski, you have the floor.
Yes, I just want to take a moment to just explain this resolution that is submitted. The New York State Legislature is set to repeal this law, presumably today or early hours of tomorrow. This, uh, law is also known as the walking law trans ban. It's a lawyering law that's very archaic and has been used to harm transgender people and people of, of color in their communities, simply for the way that they dress and for who they are. And it's time that this law is, is, um, wiped off the books and that we stand together with our trans community in the, uh, city of Buffalo. I know that this vote is just ceremonial, but I think that it's important that, um, we stand together. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm sorry, councilman Wyatt.
Can I be, can I be added, Mr. Chair?
Please, that councilmember Wyatt. Next item.
Item number forty-four has been withdrawn. Item number forty-five, Commissioner of Deeds.
Motion to adopt items forty-five and forty-six.
Second my councilmember Gollambeck.
Item number forty-seven, trailblazing resolution for George K. Arthur.
Motion approved.
Second my councilmember Gollambeck. Councilmember Wyatt, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think this is so appropriate that I'm able to approve this item during the month of Black History. Um, we know Mr. Arthur was a trailblazer in so many ways in the city of Buffalo. Um, I want to thank the Roebling Avenue Black Club for their leadership on this. Mr. Arthur and his family has lived there for many years and this was something that was very much dear on their heart, which I definitely support. I know there's going to be a lot of other things in which we're going to recognize this iconic man, but I just want to say, um, this is a tremendous blessing on this day. One of the first days of Black History Month to recognize, um, former Council President George Care, Care, thank you.
Uh, I agree. And can you, I'd like to be added, uh, if you'd allow. To this.
I'd like to be added.
Member. Councilmember Rivera would like to be added. Noakowski would like to be added. Gollambeck would like to be added. Did I miss anybody?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Wingo would like to be added. Scan would like to be added. Uh, and, uh, Councilman Farrelittle would like to be added.
Thank you.
Councilman Farrelittle. Or anybody who wants to. All right. And I agree with you, Councilmember Wyatt, as you know, I think right now is Councilmember Noakowski who has his furniture. Um, I had his furniture when I first came, uh, and when he came to visit my office, he was like, this is my furniture. And as the freshman back in that day, uh, and our, uh, freshman lawmakers don't know much about this, uh, but when you were freshmen, uh, they would clear your office out and you got whatever was in the basement. And what was in the basement was George K. Arthur's leather couch, old leather couch, obviously old leather chair and desk. Um, and I think now, um, we, we want to preserve that really, uh, in some place. And hopefully Councilmember Wyatt, uh, there will be a, some new street that's been developed in the city of Buffalo in which we could make somebody's address, uh, George K. Arthur way or something. So, but I think that this is so good on the street on Roebling, um, and for the people to lead it, you to carry it and, and bring it here to us. Thank you very much for that. Next item.
Uh, it's gonna roll call. You do the roll call, yes. Uh, councilmember Bowman. Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes, I'd like to say one quick thing. I wouldn't do my predecessor zero justice if I didn't opine and give a little bit of levity on George K. Arthur. Early in my tenure as council member, I got a, I, my staff got a tour, um, of the house that he, uh, so, uh, the Nash house that he loves to give. And I walked up the stairs and I said, one day I want to be just like George K. Arthur. And he said, old and fat. I said, old and honorable. He said, I'll take that, councilmember. With that, I give my, uh, my, uh, my approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Noakowski.
Uh, Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number forty-eight, bond resolution, Broderick Park Public Art.
Motion to send the finance items forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, all the way to seventy-three.
Second by happy birthday, Councilmember Joseph Gollambeck Junior. All right, that's our agenda. Um, councilmembers, uh, well, announcements.
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com forward slash B F L O C C. Regular committees, Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-one at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, following civil service, uh, Tuesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-one at ten AM. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, February ninth at one PM. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, February ninth at two PM.
Councilmember, any announcements for your districts? Hearing one. Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by.